I'd like to call this meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notifications, and adopt the agenda. If you can stand with me, I'll do the pledge of the flag.
Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up on our agenda is the Whitno High School Student Senate Report. Go ahead. Is the green light on?
Yes.
Good to go.
Okay. Hello. I don't know if this is on or not.
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening. As many of you may remember, my name is Ryan Teal, and I'm the Vice President of Student Council. And today I'm joined by Kathy Kopcha, who is a junior class representative. To begin, Student Council started in the new year with a host of different top projects. Upon the advice of our advisors, we have formed three microcommittees to handle three large projects for the remainder of this year: a state committee, a hair donation committee, and a Mr. Falcon committee. Student Council is also starting in the new year with our annual winter formal, which is always a major fundraiser for us. The Mr. Falcon Committee is dedicated to planning a Whitno Gives Back in the spring, with special events every day. We tried a spirit week in the spring for the first time last school year, and while successful, we want to give this year as a purpose. The week will culminate with a Mr. Falcon pageant to raise money for the Sojourner Family Peace House, an organization that supports women and children who are victims of domestic abuse. Mr. Smith from the Science Department gave us the idea, as he participated in a pageant when he was a senior in high school and again in college. Through research, we have found that many schools across the country, including the Pier in Green Bay and Aldi Stevenson in Chicago, hold events like this that draw large attendances. The committee will work with other high school clubs and the hair donation committee to put on this great event. The Hair Donation Committee is a simple committee, based around creating an event where students have the ability to cut their hair and donate to charity. We've been working with Mrs. Honacki from the math department to organize this event and have identified a charity, children with hair loss, as the organization we will be working with. We hope this Whitno Gives Back Week becomes a yearly tradition and incorporates some other fun activities, including a staff-student basketball game. I'm going to hand it over to Kathy to talk about the State Committee, which she is a member of in our upcoming winter formal.
So, coming in early February is the annual winter formal. The theme will be decided at tomorrow's Student Council meeting during Zero Hour. Themes such as snow globe and northern lights are the most popular so far. And as Ryan mentioned, Student Council has a large number of small committees, one of them being the State Committee. In the spring, Student Council would like to compete at State to be the best Student Council. Student Councils are evaluated by the State Organization on involvement in both school and community through presentations by our students and evaluations by the administration. Our committee makes sure that we are competing in as many competitions as possible to maximize our points, as well as preparing members for their respective competitions. Our council and school also benefit through the many breakout sessions held by State Council Organization and the leadership and involvement of the school.
We would like to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to give you guys another report. And do any of you have any questions or comments for us that we can take back to our Student Council?
No? Thank you.
Wait.
Okay.
Whoa.
No. So, tell me, so I've also had a Mr. Falcon type of contest. So, can you tell me, so those are all students that will participate in that? Top vote getters, is there a minimum number of that, or just a little bit more than?
To be honest with you, neither of us are on that committee, so I can't tell you the specifics. But I can tell you that senior males would be competing and seeing who has, you know, kind of like the coolest talent and things like that.
And then, like each vote, you're like paid to have a vote, and then the vote would count towards who wins, and the money would go to that person or this charity? That's what we're kind of thinking, but it's gonna be in the spring, so we still have a long time.
Okay. I'll look forward to more details.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next is item four, discussion. A is referendum planning, the marketing report.
You can just, if you zoom in, that'll probably work, that's fine. Okay. It's like, oh, no, almost not. It's right up there. No, no. Okay, can you just see that? You feel a little show ready to the, yeah, you should do this down at the bottom if you click on the plug here. Yeah, you just zoom in a little bit. And then, yeah.
So, tonight is just a preview of some of the, what we're putting together for our marketing and communication plan that you'll see up here. So, the logo that you see there is sort of what we will be using. It's sort of that layout from the W, if you see that in the word, under the vote with the checkmark thing. So, we worked with Bray Architects. They have a marketing person in trying to design a unique logo that was here. We wanted to be very careful that the Falcon wasn't overused in too many things, because a lot of our website and everything have the Falcon, and so we wanted to make sure that when people saw this, that they identified with the referendum voting and not just the Falcon that we use across the board for all of our schools. So, we didn't want to overuse the Falcon a little bit too much. We also have a tagline underneath that that says referendum, but you'll see where we use this lately. So, we have two versions of this, one with this and one that's got referendum facilities down below it. So, we've been meeting with Bray Architects this last week, and we put together, there's two things. Right here is what's called sort of our passive pieces of communication, and so a timeline that you see between now and when a vote will take place on April 3rd. And so, sort of, we met with them in terms of what materials would be creative, and it's called passive, because we sort of have them ready to go, and we said, hey, here's an idea for a poster. So, this is the materials piece of it. The passive part of it, we met and we're still developing, because we just met last Thursday late, so we don't have the timeline yet, but we put together what would be called active, some ideas for active things. Those are presentations, whether it's through PTOs or the chamber, or where we would actually go out and do active presentations and seek that out, coffee chats with the superintendent, however that is. So, there are two parts to it, passive and active. This is the part where we say, hey, we have this flyer, we can put this out there, we have a concert coming up. So, this is sort of some of the, and it was sort of standard, if you would, in terms of what they develop. So, depending upon if the district has a communications coordinator or not, it really determines where their level of involvement is. So, when we met with them and talked about what their role would be in terms of strategy, in terms of the graphic design piece of it, and in terms of having public appearance, and where our district team would fit in those places in terms of where we needed their strengths the most. And so, we decided in each of those elements where they would participate. So, we're getting a final document, but wanted to share with you some of the draft pieces. So, one of the things that came out of it, and if you remember at our last board meeting, and I've received some emails from the referendum group email that I have, some people who have some ideas of how to communicate. And so, what we didn't want to do is we like, there are some people who have some good ideas in terms of even our communication plan, not just informing some other type of group, but helping us decide what messages are most relevant in our community. Because every community is different, depending upon if you have a local newspaper, if you don't have a newspaper, what percentage of your community is tuned into social media versus, you know, how many different venues do you have that you can go and talk to people, how active is your chamber, all of those types of things. So, we were thinking that it would be very helpful and beneficial if people who have ideas on helping us develop the communication plan, rather than just helping us promote it. At the end, we got those up front, so it can't be on the next screen. Go down to the next one, I'll come back to that one. Sorry, one more. So, next Monday, a week from tonight, we, and this went out on social media, it went out to the email group, a week from tonight at 6:30 in here, we want anybody who has ideas to share with us, like, hey, did you know the Lions meet on this date? Or, hey, this is a really good way, or, hey, my grandma would do, you know, this is how she would like to know, or this is effective, or don't waste your time or money on that. We know that every ad we put in a paper newspaper costs money, is that even worth the money? Or like, yep, everybody reads the buyer's guide, so you should do it there, or whatever. So, we want to get people's ideas on our communication plan before we set forth exactly what it looks like. We think there's a lot of good ideas out there in terms of where do we best put our money, where do we best put our time and effort for the limited resources that we have, so we can really get the information out there. So, a week from tonight, we're gonna hold an event here to help people fine tune that. And then, you'll see a final communication and marketing plan, so we're in the stages of still developing it and trying to solicit, as we have been throughout the process, more stakeholder input. So, Kathy, can you go back two screens then? Yeah, sorry. So, one of the things to be, that has changed since the last referendum is absentee voting. You can register to vote, if you're not registered to vote, online, fully, as long as you're through the DMV, have a license and all of that. So, we need to, because, as you recall, our voting date is during our spring break week here, not all families go, but that still means that some families might. So, we have to really communicate about what does it mean to absentee vote, what does that look like, what is the timeline, what do our three municipalities and those voting places, if you do, if you don't mail it in, and you want to do in-person, what does that mean? So, we're gonna spend a lot of time on the whole, and refer them to the MyVote Wisconsin website, because it talks about that. We can just make sure that people are actually registered to vote, first of all, because if you wait too long for that, you can register in person that day, but you can't do absentee voting if you're not registered. So, part of it is just the whole voting process and understanding it, because it has changed since the last time the district has gone to referendum, 2015. So, you can go to the next page, Kathy. So, this is the inside pages of the Whitno window. It just got mailed today, so you should see it in your house in the next day or two. It got mailed up from the printer, and two of the eight pages there, these are, I don't think, they're pages four and five. So, on the left side page, you will see our logo, so people can start to see that, and the actual question that the board voted on in December, so people can actually see the verbiage of the question. On the right side of it, you can sort of see a synopsis of our history. We've done a quick bulleted list of each of the four buildings, so people in a real, in a quick nutshell, can see the projects that are being worked on at each building. And again, we refer them to our webpage, which right now, we're sort of changing over from the journey that we've been on, now that the board passed a resolution, to having, as we start to upload video and all of that stuff. So, you will start to see that transition into, here's what it looks like for referendum versus, here's our journey we're on for facility planning. So, this will go out, and you should, this will be out in households in the next day or two, in terms of what that looks like. And then, Kathy, can you go to the one more? Yep. So, on January 22nd, we have an all-district in-service, all employees, not just teachers. And so, Bray Architects will be coming. If you remember, I shared with the board back when Quarles and Brady had shared with us the campaigning do's and don'ts, and so, we thought it would be helpful when all of our employees are gathered together to talk to them about what they can and can't do in terms of if they are a resident and a staff member, using district resources and time and effort, they can't do that, but they're outside of school time, they're more than, they can campaign either way that they want. So, we're gonna use that time, Bray's gonna come on January 22nd to talk to all of our district staff about what they can and can't do in terms of campaigning, because they might get questions, you know, by parents, no matter where they might see them, what can they say, what can they not say. So, we just want to be very clear that they understand what they can and can't do, and we thought it was the most efficient way of doing it, since all of our staff would be gathered across the board, all employees. So, those are some events that are coming up, starting with the Whitno Window coming out in the next couple days, next Monday, having a meeting in here for anybody who wants to give us some input. And then, the following Monday is talking to all of our staff. And so, on the board meeting on the 22nd that night, you'll see hopefully a more comprehensive plan, and what it looks like between now and April 3rd, as we gather some of these input parts. But wanted to let you know what the communication has been going on since the board passed a resolution in December to lead us up to this point.
And as a note on the 22nd, that meeting will also finish the scope of the project and make that final, it'll be a straw vote, but we'll finalize the project there. So, as Lisa mentioned, when they start taking videos, start uploading it, it's all accurate. They're now recording stuff, and then we decide in February that we change, and then to backtrack, so that'll be in the 22nd too.
As to what we're exactly doing?
Yeah, well, with that last decision we needed to make, that's it. And it'll just be a straw vote, it won't be an action item, it'll just be a... So, if you have any other follow-up questions or anything you want to clarify before that night, reach out to Mike, or Lisa, or Todd, or whoever.
Feel free to join us next Monday. I mean, you're not obligated to. It's an open meeting for anybody, but we'll come back to what we gathered from that, from folks who have some really good ideas, and we want to make sure that we use them in terms of helping us plan for that, so.
All right. Thank you. So, B is 2018 WASB resolutions.
So, in, yep.
I was looking at you, you usually have one or two that you...
No.
No?
No, I did go through them, and the biggest part is, you know, you have to go there with open mind, because the discussion on the floor can change your mind. And we give you the power to vote, so just have an open mind.
Any, Lisa, did you have any?
No, I just, that they're in there, we wanted to make sure the board was aware of what WASB has brought forward. As you're aware, any district can bring forward any resolution on the floor that did not get forwarded from the committee. Kevin is a representative at the convention, and so he'll be voting on that. So, I just wanted to give people, if they hadn't had a chance, to see what the resolutions are that they would be voting on, just an opportunity to voice that, or at least give some feedback on their, in terms of that, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Kevin, thank you for agreeing to do that. Item five is discussion of future action, and that's open enrollment, so, Mike?
Yep, so this will break out two motions or two action items on the 22nd, what will be what to do with tuition waiver students, those who move out of our district during the year and still get ready to attend, and then traditionally, if they have to apply for open enrollment for the very next year, so as we always have done, where the tuition waiver students are automatically allowed to open enrollment next year. And so, I think now might be the time to discuss that, based on a couple of factors. I'll get to that in a second. And that, so that'll be the first action, and then the second action would be that how many new open enrollment seats, as we've done every January. So, what I provided you is a couple of different pieces of information, but this kind of goes along with the report from the last time as well, if you can recall. I want to take a look at that piece of information as well. But as we look at our student counts, kind of what has been happening the last three years, we've seen that we've kept our open enrollment pretty stable between that 415 and 425 open enrollment students in, something around in the 90s as far as open enrollment out. And so, while those numbers have remained stable, we've seen our overall head count start to rise, which means our residency appears to be picking up, and there was a huge increase this past year of 50 resident members, how that's broken down into membership. And so, that kind of begs the question that is, if residency is indeed rising, and if that is the trend, and it's anecdotal right now, we don't have a data story on that, so it's anecdotal, but if we see that it is rising, is it prudent to continue to automatically allow tuition waiver students to open enrollment next year, if we are concerned that that head count is gonna start to rise and residency is picking up? So, what we can do is a couple of different things, as far as tuition waiver students go. If we wouldn't automatically allow tuition waiver students to be at Whitno the next year, they would get preferential treatment on the open enrollment list. So, whatever seats that we have open, and to the grade levels, tuition waiver students would be at the top of that list as far as getting in to the open enrollment process. This would allow us a couple of different things, that would, those students who, where the grades are there, the grade seats are there, allow them in, no big deal. However, for families who have moved out of the district and they're not automatically enrolled in or enrolled in, and there aren't those seats yet, it allows us to kind of wait a little further into the process, into how many students are moving into the district, how many new students are showing up, that we can make a decision maybe a little later in the process. So, from a district standpoint, it gives us the flexibility. Obviously, from a parent's standpoint, they have to wait longer now to know, is my child gonna be going to Whitno, or do I have to enroll somewhere else and then get my name on some other lists, or simply be in the home district that I've moved to? So, that's kind of the trade-off as far as allowing us. As residency, if residency is indeed picking up, it might be nice to have that flexibility, but we want to, you know, treat families in a timely way as far as knowing whether they're gonna be here or not. So, in that regard, there's, I think that it's a time to just discuss that again, about what we want to do with that action item. The data then, that the three different scenarios is simply looking at, in the scenario one, if we accepted all the current 32 tuition waiver students, how many then seats would be available, knowing that those 32 are already in there? And so, we would have 37 new seats available, based on the optimal capacity that you see in those spreadsheets. And we can certainly talk about the optimal capacity if you would like. The next two scenarios are two different ways in which, if we don't automatically accept tuition waiver students, I pull them either out of the projection, or I pull them out of the final, out of the final projection, and pull them out of the total. There's just two different ways in which to ensure how many seats, the scenario in which we could open up seats. They yielded very similar results, 50 seats versus 47 seats. So, it's kind of a matter of how many new seats do we want to open, knowing that tuition waiver students are not automatically going to be brought in. And so, dependent upon how our conversation goes with tuition waiver students, that can kind of be, which scenario do we choose as far as how many open enrollment, new seats do we want? I hope that was clear. So, I guess what I'd like to get direction on is, first inform us whether it is worth talking about whether we automatically accept tuition waiver students, or if they should be placed on a preferential list, and thus still have to go through the open enrollment process. Is there anything? Kathy, can I add anything as well? She's intimately involved in that process.
The only thing, and with the flexibility that is nice about maybe not automatically accepting those tuition waiver students is that, right now, we know of 32 of them. But after you make this decision between now and the end of the school year, a lot of times, we get a whole lot more students that pop up that we weren't aware of. So, by giving yourself more flexibility, more control over your grade levels and your capacities.
So, that's the catch, because we have to declare with DPI now what our open enrollment seats are, right?
By January 30th, yeah. We have to report to DPI by January 30th, the number of open enrollment seats, by law, every district has to do that.
And we do have that flexibility after the deadlines, so when we get into the end of June and into July, we have a chance to better look at our projected enrollment versus the true enrollment, and know if we maybe have more than we thought we did. You know, it gives us a little bit more control.
So, how did our class sizes fare with the, when we didn't know we were getting these abnormally high number of students?
Yeah.
And we already accepted the open enrollments, and we already accepted the tuition waivers?
So, are there different things that you could think about in that case? On those spreadsheets, right, where we look at optimal capacity, and to look at each grade, whether to open those negatives, those negative outcomes are, those negative numbers are considered overcapacity, right? And so, maybe those instances, maybe they're shipped away, or maybe anywhere along the line, as far as how many students we're bringing in, at some point, we might go beyond optimal capacity. There's a second point, but I lost it. I thought it was your question, what, how would we fare?
Yeah. I mean, that was a question.
Yep. So, the other, thank you. So, then the other point then is, especially at the 4K level, we get, we really have to guess. I mean, there's a more guessing game at the 4K level than anywhere else. And so, what we're finding, I looked at Chris, what we're finding is, at the 4K level, you have Edgerton residents, for example, who are coming into the process, maybe willing their child in February or March, and we've taken some open enrollment, and based on a guess of what we think the 4K is gonna be, and all of a sudden, Edgerton's at capacity. And now, we're taking a look and going, okay, well, there's Edgerton residents going in, we're at capacity at the 4K level, you're gonna be at HCE. So, I mean, there's just, and kindergarten, we're back to Edgerton, because now their capacity's back to where we're using. So, that's an example of the 4K level. So, we've kind of tried to bring that 4K level down a little bit. But we also like to have students open enroll in. If you're gonna get an open enrollment soon then, having it at the 4K level is really good, in that they're in our district from the beginning, and you can move them all the way through. So, with everything clear, there's just a lot of considerations to look at. But the residency is really where we start to go, who, is this, are we swinging back? Is the residency swinging back? And where, where is that coming from? You see, you might know better, but there's...
There are two things that I'd want to point out. 4K and ninth grade are critical pieces that we have no control over. So, right now, we offer two sections of 4K at Edgerton, and we offer three sections of 5K. So, we're one less section at Edgerton than what they will see in 5K. Yale's corner is because we run four sections of 4K, and that's, they are a four-section elementary. So, that right there, because of the disparity between it. So, we're running six sections of 4K, when all of our other grades are seven sections, if that makes sense. So, the challenge of that is, is that we're not running as many, for a couple reasons. There are some parents who still, very few, but a few who don't send their child to 4K at all. However, what the trend tends to be is, we have parents who send their child to a different district for 4K, because we don't offer full-day 4K. That is becoming, so I know two of our contingent districts I'm working with are going to offer a full-day 4K. So, we will find some parents who have all of their kids here, but always will open enroll at 4K, because they want a full-day 4K program. So, because of that, they don't come here 4K, and they are our resident students, then they come to us, as they are allowed to in 5K. So, that becomes a challenge for us in trying to predict how many we can take in 4K, because once they're with us in 4K, they're gonna stay with us. And so, the discrepancy between the sections that we run in the two elementaries, the situation Mike talked about was pretty real this year. I had some families contact me who, let's say they have three kids in elementary school. Their 4K'er is having to go to HCE, but their other two elementary kids are at Edgerton, knowing that their 4K'er will actually go back to Edgerton, because that's where their resident is, but we don't have enough sections at Edgerton to match the number of kids. So, that becomes an issue when we're talking, where littlest learners are not getting used to a building, and that will become theirs for the next six years. So, there, you know, there's things with that, I just wanted to be aware of. The other part that happens at ninth grade is that, is where we tend to pick up our most students who have been attending a K private school, who are our resident students. And we can't control that, because they are our residents, and we don't really know until they get to that point if they're coming here. So, both at the 4K and ninth grade, we have things where we could have resident students who haven't been with us, but have the ability to come to us, in addition to just the 50 students that move in, that grew in our population count. So, the variables that make it challenging for us to sort of mitigate that, we have a really high population, I think it's at third grade, which happened last year, when we have an influx at the second grade. Those numbers are much higher than we would like to see, and so, we'll try to control that. But I mean, you know that open enrollment is used to try to mitigate that, but when you have these other factors, that we can't deny resident students, and the 4K and ninth grade thing always come into play, and, you know, it's very challenging to take an open enrollment student as a junior or senior in high school, if they haven't moved into our district, because they might often be, you know, in a situation where, where they've been, we haven't had them for a long time. And so, those are the questions that we always talk about, wanting to do what's in the best interest of, and trying to watch those numbers, especially in our elementaries, sort of our space issue.
So, are we using open enrollment to fill up those classes? Is that what we're doing?
That's still our strategy, but some of these other variables are giving us less control over that, because all of a sudden, we can't control how many students move in, or we can't control some of those other features. So, we're to the best of our ability, we are, but tuition waiver seems to be the biggest variable, all of a sudden, factor that's played into that. We've had a, that is becoming a growing number of families who move, like between now, as Kathy said, between now and when school starts, out of our district, and because we automatically give them open enrollment, those are above and beyond the open enrollment seats that you approved tonight. So, let's say 50 more kids move out, their families move to New Berlin, and they automatically get to come here, which are 50 kids through that process that we didn't count on.
And, so, the current tuition waiver children would be grandfathered, would not be grandfathered, and no, that's, they'll maybe do it...
Well, once they're, they're open enrollment now. They were once tuition waiver, they became open enrollment, so they're here for good. They don't, it's only new, current tuition waiver.
That year.
Yes. Thank you, Kathy.
No, I think it's pretty simple that we need to give the administration as much flexibility as possible, in my opinion.
Kathy?
So, I just have a question. So, let's say that there's a family, and they have a fifth grader, a third grader, and a three-year-old, and they move out of the district. So, is the three-year-old also included in the tuition waiver, or would, if we, if we allowed the third and fifth grader in as tuition waiver students, then does the three-year-old still have to go through open enrollment?
They do, they're placed, there's a preference though, that they rise to the top because of siblings.
So, if we had zero spots open in 4K, they would, there wouldn't be, but if we did have some spots, kids that have siblings here, they would get apartments and would go to the top of that open. So, you're only tuition waiver for one year, then you become an open enrollment, then[1777.62] So you're only tuition waiver for one year, then you become an open enrollment, then you're, you're done at that point. So yeah, the tuition waiver is a real short amount of time, but once that third and fifth grader became open enrollment students, their sibling would still have to do open enrollment, but they would get preference on the top of those spots that open up.
So to give you some insight into that process, so Kathy and I will do the lottery in, in February, whatever it is. Obviously we're looking, we're recognizing who's siblings arise to the top, if there are not, if there's, if there's no seats available, we're obviously on our radar to say, hey, if we can, at least that we can know that this grade level can accept another child or two, whatever the number is. We're cognizant that, that those siblings are sitting on that list and it's only third parents that we can get to them as quickly as possible. But if there's a resident influx and those grade levels rise and they're beyond optimal capacity, then we cut it off.
Right.
But even as late as mid-August, we're going, okay, there's, there's some room here and then we go over the list and see who's there and reach out to families.
Okay.
So do you have a preference either way between keeping it as it is or changing it so that we don't automatically accept?
Yeah, I agree with Quinn.
Yep.
One of the other parts, as you know, you saw, you heard, if you were a parent, you heard my voicemail that came out urgently a couple of days before school this year is that we still had a big chunk of our kid, our resident students who weren't registered. That made it very challenging for us to know how many spots we actually had, because we're trying to fill the needs of anybody who wants to come to our district. And we didn't, so we're going to really change with our online registration that we started last year. We're going to change, we're going to move that up, um, into July so we can make sure that we're having as many, and then follow up with those resident students that we believe to be continuing who have not yet registered, because then we actually have a more accurate count. Because if we assume, if it's the day before school and a family hasn't registered, you would assume they're not attending here and they moved and they haven't told you. They show up on the first day of school and that happens to sixty families and now we've called someone on a waiting list, that really puts us in a bind too. But families are waiting to know where their child is going to go to school in the first, so we want to be as responsive. So we're going to move the timeline up to resident registration, so we have a lot better accurate count of how many families are, you know, there's, there's a delay when families don't always think about notifying the school district when they move. So we have to be pretty diligent on that in terms of reminding them that it's, you know, and, and so, yeah.
So if you have a student that moves out of the district in February, you're automatically on tuition waiver for August.
Because they're on tuition waiver currently.
For the rest of that school year, right?
They have to open enrollment come the fall.
Okay. But we're automatically letting them do the open enrollment in the fall?
That is kind of the practice.
Right. So my question is, is there a point at which they have to declare whether or not they do want to be here? We're, we're saying you're going to, I'm assuming we notify them that they're automatically enrolled. So is there a point at which the family can choose to accept that?
They still have to fill out the open enrollment paperwork.
Right. But there's still a point at which they have to accept that or automatic seat for them, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a point that they could refute, right? So here's my concern. For me, the philosophy for tuition waivers and automatically open enrollment for the following year was continuity of education, continuity of education. So if there's a reason that they've moved out and not having the children come back to Whitnell is disruptive to the children, I don't think it helps us not to opt for the automatic enrollment. I think in some cases, I wouldn't presume to know every family's situation, but it might do more harm than good to have them forced into a choice if they didn't automatically know when their kid was born. And I, in the spirit of, of what I always believed tuition waivers to be, I don't want to see that automatic enrollment away. While it's true, we'd rather get the family in at four K or at kindergarten to ensure that new families stay with us, you know, assuming that that's, that's the scenario for the reason that they're coming in. Yeah, I can see where it would make sense to, to try to attract the longer term than the one that, that, you know, is, is available. But I would rather that we service the families and the children first with continuity of education before we think about, I don't want to say hide them off because that's not accurate either, but I'd rather give them that, that level of comfort, especially where they can make the choice based on their family's situation, whether or not they're going to accept it automatically. And I'd rather leave the choice of the family.
I think the challenge for all of us is right now, we're talking about hypothetical situations. Unfortunately, the situation you talk about is the rare case and I, I can't give certain, obviously, the, the information surrounding it. And that's where I think you're seeing the, why this is coming forward, because that's not the case that we're seeing. And as you know, there's an affidavit process also that turns into then tuition waiver pieces also. So I think that, that whole process that we're trying to look at right now, and I think that we've been pretty responsive when that, I don't think we've ever rejected a situation where the continuity is the case. And so it's, the problem is that we're, every individual case has a unique story with it. It's just creating sort of a, you know, a bottleneck here because the situation has happened is if we automatically continue that and then we have resident students now, do we hire another teacher? Do you know, what, what would be that answer if we, if we've created a situation where we're sitting with thirty-two second graders in their classes? That's, I guess that's, I want the board to be aware if, if that's what that is. And then we were really close to that last year with our second graders. We lost a few over, I won't say luckily, but we were at the point that we almost needed to decide what are we going to do with that? So I guess that's the reality is if we automatically roll it over for that, because we're doing the best we can planning, but we can't control the resident students that come in, even with no open enrollment seats, we could end up with, and I don't think, you know, looking at our optimal situation, none of us are trying to put thirty-two, you know, younger children in any classroom at any point, so.
And we can't change the timeline because that's.
Those are state statutes. Yeah, and those are the notifications when they have to let us know when the, and that, that perpetual open enrollment app, as soon as the regular window closes in April, then the best interest of the child perpetual open enrollment applications start also. Yeah.
Anything else?
I'd rather we continue to automatically enroll.
Okay. I mean, I mean, there's, there's, there's things to both sides. Uh, or obviously I would just come, we would just come up with, uh, with a scenario of a proposal, so we left them open. Everyone this morning at least talking about the financial piece. I think it was all just attached dollars that they, uh, the state obviously continues to, not obviously, the state continues to increase the dollar amount for open enrollment in and out. So each year of the biennium, the dollar amount for in and out students is going up three hundred dollars. It's a significant amount of dollars to be able to go up. If your district, if you win, if you gain ten and you lose ten, it's a wash. It doesn't matter how, you could go up a million dollars, it doesn't matter, really not. Ten million's going out, ten million's coming in, it's a wash. If your district though, that can increase that gap, right? Your in becomes greater than your out in the given year, financially it will continue to come out ahead as well. And so the scenario in which we do carry over tuition waiver students automatically, it is now an increase of the thirty-seven kids, because that's what the math says, you have to open up thirty-seven seats plus the thirty-two, sixty-nine open enrollment students in. And, you know, that's, that's a fairly large, a large number in that we're going to give in here. And we don't see that many going out, so we probably see our gap continue to divide and which has a financial benefit. At the same time though, if you don't, if you don't bring those tuition waiver students that we're banking on, it becomes, well, it's more residents coming into the district because that's why we're eliminating it. Obviously residents, we know from our revenue formula, carry a greater dollar amount of open enrollment in than outs. And so there may just be that simple trade-off that, yes, you're not getting that same, you might be losing some open enrollment in students and that gap might be shrinking causing lower dollars to go out that way, but you might just simply be recovering in your revenue formula because you're banking on the residents. So there, there's, there's a lot of those considerations to take and so we can see both sides of it. I guess from a, from a proposal standpoint, um, and, and obviously we don't reveal board here, uh, tonight also, um, I, I can come forward with just a proposal that says one way or the other and, and we just vote on it from there? Is that kind of, I don't want to, I don't want to take a straw poll right now necessarily.
Here, let's see.
Well, I have one other question. Is there any way to add qualifiers on tuition waivers or is it just that's it? I ask because I'm curious to know if we run into where someone moves in the district, gets, gets an apartment for a month, gets their kid on there, tuition waiver and you're in that.
Yeah, you, you worry about that game, right? Or, or, and I don't know what the perception is out there. I don't know if the perception is, if, if we just leave the district, I know that I'm going to get in and so I don't need to stay in Whitnell. I, I can be wherever I want and I know that I'll come back and I'll, I'll be able to stay at Whitnell.
I'm just curious, I know it's happened in some other schools where they'll do that, you know, parents know where they want, they live somewhere as desirable as, maybe we live in their opinion, they'll rent an apartment so they can establish a residency so that they can get in and then that's it and you're, you're good to go. So it's really all or nothing is what it is?
When it comes to tuition waivers, it's a, it's a state form. And so the parents fill out the form and there's, depending upon the date of their move, will depend upon the section of the form that they fill out. And they have their certain qualifiers, qualifiers that they have to meet, like, um, the first section might be that they had to have been in attendance for our first count date in September and twenty school days. And then if they meet the criteria under those sections and they answer yes to the questions based on the date of their move, we are required to give them a tuition waiver. Now there is like, so, so right now the tuition waiver families that you have are students that have moved out earlier in the school year and they now are on a current year waiver that allows them to attend this school year. Now if you have a family towards the end of this school year, maybe like into March, and they move into March because of circumstances that required them to move, maybe it was unplanned, whatever, then the state requires you to give them not only a current year waiver for the remainder of this year, but we would also have to grant them an additional year waiver for all of next year. So it allows them this flexibility to, you know, oh my gosh, we have to move to March. It still allows them to have that continuity of education throughout the next school year and then apply for.
I guess, is there any way for us to personally add our own thing where it qualifies you, you can't establish, you haven't established residency at X amount of years, we'll give you the, which there was, I guess, more as well.
Yeah, no.
Okay. That was my question.
So do you have a preference either way?
I, not strong either way. I completely understand where Stephanie's coming from on that. You get a family that divorces and the parents move to somewhere else and run in a situation of you got how many children switching schools. Um, right now I don't have a preference either way, but like I said, I guess, like, like you said, I would be okay with bringing the proposal this way or that way, however it's going to go.
Right down the middle. Right down the middle. Got it. Um, so I, I understand where Stephanie's coming from and I appreciate that. I would lean more towards not automatically, you know, I think it gives the district a little more control, uh, more flexibility to adjust as we need to, to make sure that we aren't in a situation where we're over, over one class or, no, 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 because then it comes back to the conversation of, um, class size and then we're back to that. So if we can give that more flexibility to stop that and control the numbers, I think it'll benefit us a lot because we can better prepare and trouble manage classes. So take with it what you will, uh, when you get the feedback here and.
Got it.
Both of them.
Got it.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Um, so next item number is, sorry, six, uh, the interview of the Board of Education candidates discuss and take action to fill the Board of Education vacancy. Um, so just for the audience, a couple, and TV two, a couple notes regarding it, um, each candidate will have five minutes to speak. Uh, the presentation and ballot order were decided via random selection last week Friday. Uh, the order is Karen, then Jessie, and then Steven. Voting will be done using pre-printed ballots, which Kathy already has. We'll hold a maximum of ten votes. A candidate must receive a majority of votes, um, in this case based on the number, it'd be three, um, to win the election. If a candidate is not selected during the first vote, candidate with the lowest number of votes will be eliminated before the next vote. Uh, the name of the eliminated candidate will be crossed off the ballot prior to the next vote. Uh, if we do not reach a minimum of three votes for a candidate after the tenth vote, a motion to table the vote until the meeting on January twenty-second will need to be made and voted on or per board policy, the board president will appoint the new board member after the sixty-day window ends. Um, questions will not be allowed during the candidate presentations and, um, we will swear in the new board member immediately following the vote and then they will join us up here for the rest of the meeting. So any questions from board members before we start?
One clarification. The motion to table has to come before the tenth?
Come after.
Come after.
We just said, yeah, can come after the tenth.
Correct. And I tally the votes and, right, and then I announce who got how many votes.
Exactly. You don't have to, um, so the.
Say who voted for who, but.
Exactly. Yeah, the secret ballots aren't allowed, so each board member will have to sign the ballot after they make their selection and pass it over to Kevin. Kevin will tally it.
Send me a list.
You're welcome.
Got it.
I do. Okay, so with that, if you don't have any other questions, um, Karen, you want to start? So you can have a seat right here and.
So hi, everyone. My name's Karen McElainus. Um, I'm pleased to be here tonight. Thanks for having me. Um, did you all receive a copy of the letter of intent and candidate questionnaire? I put a lot, um, into those answers, so hopefully that gives you kind of an overview of who I am and where I'm coming from. To summarize, I am a Whitnell parent. I have two kids at Whitnell Middle School and a son in the third grade, that large third grade class at Edgerton Elementary School. Um, I've been a resident of the district for almost twenty years, so a long time. And I pay taxes here, so, um, I have the experience both as a parent at the school and as someone who pays property taxes every January. When I was thinking about why, um, why I'd like to be on the school board, first of all, I take an interest in the schools, of course, because my children are here, um, also as a community member. And I think we have great schools. At Edgerton, we've had a wonderful experience. I think things are going well for the kids. At the same time, I feel that there's always opportunities to improve, there's always opportunities to be involved and serving on school board is a valuable opportunity to make a difference in the community. When I was reading about school boards, I went online and I read several things. I watched a couple of videos of your meetings, so that was, um, good, good background information. But the most meaningful thing to me was that being on a school board, a school board can make a difference in educational outcomes. And that meant something to me and encouraged me to feel that's why I should be here, not just for my own children, but for all of the children. I know what you're working on is long-term and you're going to year 2020, I think, is your plan. I'm interested in knowing more about your long-term plans and vision and the, the work that's been done so far. But, um, I feel that my involvement does have a chance to make a difference and that's why I'm the most interested, that's, that's why I'm here tonight. Uh, let's see, what else? I have a background. Right now, I work as a fitness instructor in the community. I work as a financial writer, um, which is really fun and interesting because I get to review companies and learn all about them and really dig in and research topics. And I feel that that's something that I could do, um, with the school board topics too. I'm nerdy. I like reading things. I like, I went on and looked at the statutes and looked at the laws and kind of dug into it a little bit. You can only go so far. I did not get through the entire school policy manual. I started, but seeing how you work, I think it's something that you bring things here, we can work on things. I reviewed the packet for tonight before I came. So I feel that I could come to meetings prepared and ready. You don't need to read the slides. To me, I kind of catch on quick and know what's going on. Another thing that I was thinking of as I was planning on coming here was reflecting on my own public school education. I grew up in Westipure, Wisconsin, and until I was preparing to come here, I didn't really think a lot about my public school education, you know? I went to school, I graduated, I went to college, I got on with life. But, um, thinking about coming here tonight, I thought about my own education and I feel I got a very high-quality education, particularly at Westipure High School. The district there is somewhat similar to Whitnell. We're not. Um, we're not, well, it's a suburban district located next to a larger city of Green Bay. It has a high school, a junior high school, and two elementary schools. Um, I was a good student. I participated in things like, um, a honors English class where you received college credit. So, I'm familiar with some of those things that are going on in the district here. Um, it had very good extracurricular activities, um, good sports, you know, just a nice range of things. My graduating class was about a hundred and eighty kids, so, a similar, you know, similar in size to what we have at Whitnall. And if my kids got the same kind of education that I received, particularly in high school, I would feel extremely satisfied with that kind of outcome. So, that's a little bit of, you know, that's a long time ago, but that's also sort of my frame of reference for what I seek out of a public education. Um, not, not just for my kids, but for the kids who are in this district.
And that hits us at five minutes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Jesse, you're next.
Good evening, I'm Jesse Stovoeak. Thank you very much for taking the time today to listen to my pitch. I am a alumni of this school district. I've lived in this district ten years. Moved out, bought a house, and decided to move back, actually at the tail end of building a house. So, I've really invested in this district. I've attended several board meetings. I'm sure some of you have seen me here. I've worked to try and petition the Board to change certain policies that were outdated or needed updating. That one, uh, that I spoke of was actually early admittance policy and I was pretty happy with the result on that. I was a couple of years old and I was happy with the overall result for four-twenty-one and four-twenty-one R. I've attended several fundraising events for the schools. Um, I have two children in the district. One is in K-four, one is in K-five. So, I will be here for a very long time, thirteen years. So, that just shows my commitment to wanting to be here and wanting to be involved. I also do some volunteering. I headed up the United Way campaign for my department at work, this IT department. I've also helped deliver and transport food to the guest house in Milwaukee. And I've also volunteered through work for distributing cookie books. I work for We Energies, if you've ever seen those books, they're a pretty popular item. And I've worked at the, um, Energy Park, if you've ever seen that, at State Fair, working with the kids and putting on the find-me wristbands, what to do. I've learned a lot from attending the school board meetings. Um, I've seen a wide variety of things that you've done, setting calendars, um, voting on different things that are important to policy, uh, just a wide variety of those options. Um, some of my governmental experience, um, I currently work for We Energies in IT. And what I currently do is, um, compliance-related, so critical infrastructure protection and adhering to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So, a lot of governmental rules, making sure that we're abiding by those things. So, I'm very familiar with government policies and how things are written. I believe that the children are the primary focus of, of what the school board is. I understand that the taxpayers are important, but the children come first, in my opinion. And that's one of the main reasons, um, not only for my own children, but for all of them in the district. Um, having been an alumni, I've seen how much this benefits all the kids. I came from a parochial school, um, from kindergarten through eighth grade. So, I came here for high school and it was a little tough for me because the standard was so high for this district, which was really great because I adjusted and I came out a lot better than I came in. And that was a choice that my parents made to take me out of a parochial system and put me into a public system because they believed in this school district. And I believe I'm a pretty good product of that. Um, my brother and sister have also been in the system even longer than I had and they did even better than I did. So, it's a really, a good testament to what this school is all about. One thing I find impressive about it too is the honors program and being able to give those kids the opportunity to earn college credits before they're even in college is just spectacular. And that leaves more room open for them to explore what they really wanna do. And I think that's another great thing about this district is the personalized learning and where you kind of tailor it to each individual kid. And I think that's great. That's something I didn't personally have. And I know that some kids are stronger in some areas and not so strong in others. And I think that's great that you can kind of shift it a little bit and make the perception different about learning. Um, another thing, my experience in information technology, I think would be a great asset to the Board when it comes to making technology purchase decisions if the school is looking to implement new software for learning. Uh, I know that there was a specific piece of software for, um, I think it was biology or science in one of the previous meetings where that was really, really neat, how you're not investing in textbooks that are gonna get old. The curriculum constantly changes, you're able to customize it more. You're not just, here it is, this is what you do.
It's got about five seconds.
Okay. And my attitude towards Board teamwork is I'm willing to work with anybody. I appreciate opinions and I really hope that I'm the candidate of your choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. Apologize for my getup, it's a really important game tonight. I'm a Georgia alumni, I'm really excited, but I'm here instead. So, just to quit, I presume you have all my paperwork, but one of the things I just wanted to touch on with my resume and everything is I come from a family of educators. My sister is about hours away from getting her PhD in education. My mother was a special education educator. My uncle is a PhD in education at Kent State. And my job currently is working at the medical college and teaching residents and fellows adult learning. As far as my role or my involvement in the school so far, you know, the biggest thing that I do at this time is I'm president of the Band Boosters, which means I'm helping out a lot and supporting the music program. You know, whether it's providing things for concerts in between, organizing the marching band camps and transporting the kids and transporting the instruments, things like that, working with, um, music director to see what his needs are and trying to support those. I was also fortunate to be involved in choosing the new athletic director in my role as the Band Booster President. I've also been involved with the Falcon Boosters, mostly with concessions, working many football games. My wife is one of the concession leads, which kind of by marriage means I am too. So, I'm orienting people and bringing in new parents all the time for that kind of thing. Um, I also helped out with the WSMA Music Program that we had this last year. Basically, Mr. Noack did the music part of it and the Band Boosters did all the rest of it, setting up all the food and getting everything oriented or organized that way. And then, one of the things that lately that my wife and I have both been doing is attending the, uh, parent learning academies for the honors program and trying to see what's going on with that. We currently have one daughter, she's a junior this year. Um, we're been in the district our whole lives. Um, you know, we moved here as part of, this was the beginning of our adult lives, so we've been in the district ever since then and brought our daughter here. This was one of, the school district was one of the reasons why we moved here. The appeal I have for applying to the school board is kind of twofold. One is I like the direction that the Board is taking right now. I've been very enthused and empowered by the new leadership that we have, that the personalized learning is taken by tackling the referendum issue again. You know, with my daughter and club volleyball, we see lots of high schools across the state and ours doesn't compare physically too well to them. However, in like the band competitions and other things, I think our students can out-compete anybody in the state. I'm very proud to be from Whitnall. Um, the other part of the Board thing is I actually serve on four different Boards at this time. So, I'm very used to, you know, working with people, doing committee things, kind of trying to stay on purpose to what the Board's goals are. I look through your policies to kind of see what, um, you know, what you use, what is your purpose for being here, how are you trying to accomplish that? You know, I've been on, most of what I do is with the hospital and with our practice board, but I'm also on a, um, a national surveying, accrediting healthcare committee board and that's like business and we're up there making all our business decisions. Um, a couple of the Boards I've been involved in have gone through a couple of evils. So, I'm kind of used to tackling big issues and working through things that way. Um, you know, the last thing that I wanted to do is, political things aside, I always get really mad when you're having to pick between a couple candidates and it's the lesser of two evils. So, I'm hoping to at least be the person who's not evil, that at least you would consider filling a position as someone who wants to work here, someone who believes in the program, and someone who's willing to bring the experience I have doing similar work and hopefully riding and lifting up the Board as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, um, Kathy, Kathy will pass out the ballots again. Select your candidate, sign the bottom, and we'll pass them down to Kevin and we'll...
You just kind of place them somewhere in the bubble.
Three great candidates, really, thank you. And they're all very impressive, really, that's unbelievable. I don't know why you didn't run for my job.
Did you sign up?
Yes.
Do I have to say something like official, official here?
Just say the total for...
All right, so, well, we do have a winner, so that's good. So, we went through that ten vote business, so that's nice. So, the winner, uh, with four votes is Stephen Boots.
Boots.
Boots, four, four to one. And then the other person receiving the vote was Jesse as well. So, four to one, so he got my, whatever I have to say. I don't have that.
So, Jesse and Karen, thank you both for your time and putting your information. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think she's going to get it.
So, actually, while she's going to get it, why don't we, um...
I'd shake your hand, but I'm a little not well. I mean, I know you're probably around some sick people sometimes, but you know... Oh, you're gonna do that?
Unless you wanna sit out in aisle two, so...
Okay. Why are you laughing? Put him over there. We're only gonna be here for like ten more seconds. Why don't you sit over there?
Why not? I did that, yeah.
She did, you did that to make him feel...
Oh, I thought that was for the swearing in, it hurt.
No.
Well, we gotta wait for, I think Kathy's getting it.
She is, she's getting it.
She's getting the stuff. And then, all we're really gonna do is adjourn to close session, so you'll be there by yourself for however long it takes for Kathy to get back over it. Um, so just as a note, so with this, um, an email account will be created. Chris will start on that this week. We'll have that to you later this week, Chris Camp. Yeah, so, he'll have that set up. There'll also be a Chromebook or an i, Chromebook. So, it'll be a Chromebook for you to use. It'll have all the district stuff set up on it, so you can do that. Um, and you'll be on the email groups and everything starting as soon as emails all arrive. So, should, should we just at this point adjourn to close session and do the swearing in after? Can he sit in in the meeting? Okay, then we'll wait.
Five minutes ago.
So, I really hope this...
But who's counting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not distracted at all.
You can only hope that the closed session goes a few hours long.
Yeah, I do have Whitnall closed too, just so you know.
It's already fourteen, nothing.
No, he's just giving...
I wore my Alabama shirt last year.
You did.
Did you? Oh, you did.
I hope you're wearing it again this year, then.
Well...
Paul Feinbaum seems to think that Alabama's gonna go all the way because Steve Sabre...
Nick Sabre.
Nick Sabre, who's two years in the row, so... But he tends to be wrong. Paul Feinbaum's voice, that sound? He won't allow it. And so Kevin, as the clerk, needs to read it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you know, then if you wanna go in front, do you want...
I have to take a picture of the president.
You do.
I haven't done a tweet today, so...
You need to be in this picture.
Well, did you not want, I have...
Take a shot, I'm just not speaking, we'll do like the hand thing and then we can make it look like...
Kevin, you can have your back to the camera and...
Yeah.
Steve can hit me forward to the camera, so you just get his picture.
You've been on it the whole time.
Yeah. Well, yeah, Kevin reads and Steve repeats.
Here, just go stand right there, just go stand right there. Hey, Steve, just stand right there, it's fun. Stand right there, don't worry about it.
Raise your right hand, raise your right hand. All right. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Stephen Boots.
Having been duly elected to the Board of Education of the Whitnall School District.
Having been duly elected by the Board of Education of the Whitnall School District.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of Wisconsin.
Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of set office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of set office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, um, so with that, item seven is a motion to adjourn a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one C to discuss A, staff resignation, B, administrative contracts, and C, superintendent mid-year evaluation. Nancy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Stephanie? Kevin?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Jonathan, aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, have a great evening.
Like Steve or Stephen?